All right, Aaron, it's all yours. Lights?
Camera.
In 1887 Guthrie Oklahoma was established as a railroad station on the Southern Kansas Railway. Two years later, over fifty thousand settlers gathered at the edges of the unsigned lands in hopes of studying the claim to the plot. When the can of three sound of the land run of 1889 commenced, roughly ten thousand people settled in what became the capital of the new territory of Oklahoma. Much has changed since that day. Today Guthrie is having a renaissance and we want T-Mobile to be a part of it. Guthrie has dozens of festivals and events bringing in upwards of a hundred thousand visitors a year. Guthrie's Pollard Theater presents around one hundred state productions a year with a total attendance of over twenty thousand people. Plaza Arena hosts over thirty-five rodeo events per year with a total attendance of over five hundred thousand people. As a rural community that is rapidly growing, we are in need of fast and reliable internet to service our new developments. We have a newly completed elementary school and a new technical college under construction. We have new businesses, growing housing developments, and a newly designed industrial park and so much more. Our students, our entrepreneurs, our senior residents, and our business owners deserve the best and we believe that T-Mobile is going to provide that. Guthrie Oklahoma welcomes you, T-Mobile. We can't wait for you to be part of Team Guthrie.
So that's our video entry for the T-Mobile three million dollar techno booth competition.
Good job, Aaron.
All right.
Great job, guys. Great job on the staff. We'll find out by the end of the year, we've been told. So for those that weren't here, the opportunity for a makeover, which included includes some significant resource infusion, is for communities of less than fifty thousand, so nationwide. The application process has already passed. We've submitted this and other information. Staff's done a great job in doing that. I suspect there won't be too many that are doing videos, but so.
There's a lot of towns out there.
Always with a leg up. Okay, good. Anything else Leroy that you have on that?
No, that's it. We just wanted to share with you what we presented. I think our team is, again, we're getting more refined and better at what we do and just want to keep you in the loop of as we make progress as a team on pursuing these things.
Okay. Anybody have a question on Shondo or Leroy on that, this application? Okay. I would just like to say from what you've presented the last hour, compliments to you and the staff for having projects that are ready to go so that we don't miss a possible opportunity for funding and also how you are leveraging, potentially leveraging money, you know, getting grants that have an eighty-twenty split, pretty good deal. And so hopefully we're all successful, but congratulations in taking the first step, you and your staff Leroy, taking the first step to make that happen for the community.
Thank you.
So congratulations and thanks to all the staff involved. Okay, if you would please stand and join with me, the pledge, pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am standing for our prayer. Are you doing the prayer?
No, you are.
Oh. Please pray with me. O Lord heavenly Father, we are so grateful to have this opportunity to come together and meet, to have the responsibility to guide, to assist, to make Guthrie an even better place. Guide us in our deliberations, O Lord. Help us to hear, help us to think, help us to create a vision for what is best for Guthrie and best for all of the citizens of Guthrie. In your name we pray. Amen. Now called to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting, May eighteenth. Second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. We do have a proclamation that I would like to present. And I think we have some ladies from the auxiliary that are here. You want to come right up here? Is this a photo opportunity, Mike?
It is.
Okay.
Photo op.
Okay.
Photo op.
All of the auxiliary members want to come up facing this way so he has a good picture. So, this is the proclamation. Whereas America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died in the field of battle, whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, whereas the red poppy has been designated as the symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Therefore, I, Stephen J. Getling, Mayor of the City of Guthrie, do hereby proclaim the twenty-eighth day of May, two thousand twenty-one, as Poppy Day and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom, our freedom, by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. The Poppy Day is the Friday, always the Friday before Memorial Day. And the American Legion nationwide has taken that up as a major project to remind us all and to sell the poppies. And all these ladies all represent the American Legion Auxiliary here at the LeBron Post fifty-eight.
We distribute them for a donation.
And distribute for a donation. In other words.
We don't sell them.
In other words, yes. Distribute for a donation, I'm sorry, that's the appropriate terminology. Anyway, I'd like to go ahead and present this to these ladies and look at Mike there for... Very good. Anybody want, any of you want to make comment?
Not really. We have poppy cans at several businesses. We have a rose trellis at Terrence Pawn Shop, at Robert Dewar's Place of Business.
Dewar Insurance, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, well, thank you. Thank you.
Good job, Steve.
Okay, item number three, consent agenda items A through C. A is the approval of the minutes of the Public Works Authority meeting of May fourth. B is the approval of the minutes of the Public Works Annual Authority Meeting of May fourth. And C is the approval of a change order with Young Construction, which decreases by a little over a hundred thousand dollars the cost of the wastewater treatment plant. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then of the consent agenda items A, B, and C. Item number four, discussion and possible action to award a contract to the Guthrie Public, I'm sorry, Guthrie Water Plant, clear water joints for the purposes of... Well, I guess fixing the joints, is that correct?
Correct. DEQ did an inspection and this was one of their findings and they asked us to address it immediately. So what you will be doing tonight is approving the contract to make the repairs as ordered by DEQ and waiving the normal competitive bid requirement because of the time constraints we were given by DEQ.
Because of the urgency of getting it done.
Correct.
And thirty-three, a little over thirty-three thousand dollar contract?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion then to approve the contract with the waiver of a competitive bid requirement.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to go ahead and award that contract and waive the competitive bid process. With that, ladies and gentlemen, this last item on our Public Works Authority meeting, we are adjourned. And I call toward our City Council meeting of May eighteenth. Second item on the agenda is consent agenda items A through F. A is the approval of the minutes of the Special City Council Meeting Workshop of May fourth. B is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting of May fourth. C is the approval of the City Council Meeting of May fourth. One was the sixty-fifth with old members and one was the sixty-sixth with new membership. D is the approval of agreement between the City of Guthrie for the use of Highland Hall Facility for the Logan County Aging Services. E is the approval of City of Guthrie City Council Orientation Handbook. F is the approval of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twelve authorizing participation in the O-MAG recognition program, which gets us about ten thousand dollars. And G is the approval of the addendum to the Video Services Agreement with Southwestern Bell for a term not to exceed five years expiring May first, two thousand and twenty-six. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through G.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval of consent agenda items A through G. Item number three, discussion and possible action of City Council to acknowledge the Code of Ethics for elected and appointed officials with the approval of Resolution number two thousand, two thousand nine dash twelve. Didn't read quite right, but.
The motion's just to acknowledge and sign.
I think that you have a paper in front of you if you haven't already signed. I think some already have. And if you haven't, now's the opportunity.
And a motion?
Oh.
So moved.
Yeah, a motion.
Second.
I was gonna wonder what happened if I didn't get a motion.
Motion and a second, okay. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then that we will all abide, sign by and abide by the Code of Ethics for elected and appointed officials. Item number four, discussion and possible action to elect the Vice Mayor for a term of two years through May of twenty nineteen, two thousand twenty-three. I have nominated Mr. Case, Councilman Case, for this to continue in that role and I would like to place that nomination forward. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval with one abstention, I guess.
So moved.
Did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Unanimous approval then, congratulations, Councilman Long as being Vice Mayor for yet another two years.
Councilman Long.
Long.
Good job, James.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Case.
He needs to get his glasses back.
Long was the next line. Okay. Okay, item number five, discussion and possible action to confirm Mayor's appointment of James Long. There we got it, right. Brian Bothroyd and Tracy Williams to the Finance Committee for a two-year term expiring May of two thousand twenty-three. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval, those three names to be put forward for the Finance Committee. Item number six, discussion and possible action to confirm Mayor's appointment of Jim Case, Jeff Taylor, Don Channel to the Streets Committee for a two-year term expiring May of two thousand and twenty-three. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then for those three individuals to be on the Streets Committee for another two-year term. Item number seven, discussion and possible action to reconfirm appointment of James Long to serve as ex officio member of the Historic Preservation Commission for a two-year term expiring May second, two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval, Councilman Long, congratulations. Item number eight, discussion and possible action for, by the Mayor and City Council to appoint Council Members Don Channel and Brian Bothroyd to serve as non-voting ex officio members of the Guthrie Convention and Visitors Bureau for a term, two-year term expiring in May of two thousand twenty-three. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
And a second? And motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval for those two individuals to be ex officio to the CBB. Item number nine, discussion and possible action to reconfirm the appointment of Mayor Getling as the city's designated delegate and Councilman Taylor as the alternate delegate to ACOG, Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, the Board of Directors, the Intermodal Transportation Policy, the Governor Wellington Policy, and the nine-one-one ACOG Board of Directors. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval for Mayor Getling, Councilman Taylor to be on the ACOG boards. Item number ten, discussion and possible action to confirm Mayor's appointment of Robert Easterling to the Guthrie Library Board for a three-year term through May of two thousand and twenty-four. You've seen his applications in your packet. I'll entertain a motion for Mr. Easterling on the Library Board.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then for Mr. Easterling on the Library Board. Item number eleven, discussion and possible action for MOU between the ACOG Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, City of Guthrie for a Community Economic Resiliency Initiative Program.
I can summarize it. It and Justin can get in more detail if you need more detail, but we agree to apply for, it's a planning grant in the twenty thousand dollar range. It allows a group out of OU to come work with us to develop some concept plans, to take the elbow area and look at developing it into more of a recreation area, but still do it in a way respectful to the history of the area. And there is some private ownership, so we'll be using the public-owned portions of that, look at some trails, maybe a trail system where you could have a five K run where we don't have to have police officers walking streets, connecting to the Banner Park and downtown by using Fifth Street. This will just be a planning exercise, look at those concepts, flush them out so that we are better prepared when a trail grant opportunity comes up to apply for those grants in the future. So it's just a planning grant at this stage.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to move forward with that Siri, Siri grant. Item number twelve, discussion and possible action to award bid number twenty twenty-one dash two for the Springer Intersection Rehab Program.
I'll let Tenny do the next two.
On February sixteenth, staff was authorized to solicit bids for this project, First and Springer Intersection Rehab. We had three bids turned in. Rudy Construction turned in a bid for a hundred and fifty-one thousand, two eighty-seven for sections A through D, including E was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven sixty-seven. Onsite turned in a bid for two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six fifty-five and three cents for sections A through D and including E was two hundred and sixty-one thousand, sixty dollars and three cents. Young Contracting turned in a bid for sections A through D was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-six thousand and fifty cents, including E was a hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. This project is a full intersection rehab using stamped colored concrete, installing some French drain systems and addressing the ADA sidewalk approaches. We're recommending approving, moving forward with Rudy Construction with a total bid, section A through D for a hundred and fifty-one thousand, two eighty-seven, two eighty-seven, and authorizing the city staff to do section E, which is boring a four-inch water line under the intersection and doing the two interconnections.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions?
He needs it bad.
Okay.
I knew you'd be first to nominate. That's your corner.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to award bid number twenty twenty-one dash two, sections A through D, to Rudy Construction. Item number thirteen, discussion and possible action to award bid number twenty twenty-one dash three, Pine Street Culvert. I guess you might as well stay right there.
On April seventh, again, and April fourteenth, public notice was published in the newspaper. We had two bids received on this project. This is our Pine Street Concrete Culvert replacement, road widening and waterline relocation, as well as guardrail replacement. The two bids received for this project, one was from Tom Hudson Paving for five hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Second bid received was Young Contracting, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. This is a eighty-twenty match project that was done through ODOT and the Federal Highway Administration. Our local match for this would be, for the total project, I'll back up, go through the total project, including engineering, surveying, staking, land acquisition, total project was seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand, ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents. ODOT's share of this project was six hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and ninety-one cents. So our local match would be a hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents. We did do some emergency repairs immediately whenever the, we lost a partial portion of the road. We've received a hundred percent of reimbursement of that portion of the project, which was seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. Staff would ask for approval to authorize to move forward with Tom Hudson Paving at five hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-one cents.
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second? Are we gonna have to shut down Pine while they're doing all that?
Yeah, a portion of this road would be looked at being shut down as well as probably routing traffic down Walnut and around. We'll work through the school system with that as well.
That's really busy, school, lot of bus traffic there.
When will they start the work? School's almost out.
We haven't gotten to that point. That'll all be decided during the pre-work meeting once we authorize a bid.
Do they have any time? Do they have any idea how long it takes?
We do not. With the construction projects kind of in the shape they are in right now, I know Tom Hudson has already kind of asked for a delayed start because he's delayed on some existing projects that he currently is on due to some, I guess, concrete issues running into issues getting concrete.
Which might be better for school anyway. Let school, those who are going out.
When school starts. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to move forward with bid number twenty twenty-one dash three and the award of that culvert replacement to Tom Hudson Paving. Item number fourteen, discussion and possible action to confirm Mayor's nomination to appoint Harvey Braggs to the Parks Board for two-year term through June of two thousand twenty-three. Again, you have his application in front of you. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous approval then to appoint Mr. Braggs to the Parks Board. Item number fifteen, discussion of a proposed twenty twenty-one Emergency Solution Grant Application by Neighborhood Hope Dealers for the submission of Oklahoma Department of Commerce Grant. Leroy, you want to make opening comments on that?
I'll make some opening comments. I tried to do a little summary. I know the whole guidelines within your agenda package. I didn't know if there was any more details tonight.
It's a bunch.
To start with, item fifteen C, we put on there just as the cover it all in case there was a request for any matching funds from the city because this grant has to be matched a hundred percent. Neighborhood Hope Dealers, or as we commonly refer to it as Hope House, figured out how to structure their grant application. They do not need any funding from the city for the match. So you can strike item fifteen C from consideration. This is a grant called Emergency Solution Grant. It's to provide funding to assist with homeless. And the deadline for the application is June first of this year at five P.M. Item one, or fifteen A, is mandatory. I'm not exactly sure why HUD does it this way, but through HUD and then of course that money goes to Department of Commerce. In order to receive these grants, every shelter has to get approval from the municipality that operate out of approval to do their program. Stillwater does it, every community that has a shelter applies for grants does it. And that's a minimum mandatory that we have to approve. Under the sponsor, item fifteen B, there are two options relative to sponsor and the reason that, and I'm just going, we commonly refer to it as Hope House, so that's what I'm gonna say tonight, that the official name is Neighborhood Hope Dealers, but because Hope House has never had one of these grants before, they have to have a sponsor. Once they have had a grant for a year in an audit and been successful, then they won't have to have a sponsor going forward, but for the first time. So they will need one for this time, not seeing in, they also got COVID money, just like all the other entities got COVID money. My understanding is there will be an opportunity to apply for some additional dollars through the COVID money in the June timeframe. They haven't come out with the rules and regulations on that program yet, but very likely because they have not had the year experience, they will need a sponsor for that grant application. That grant application's pretty attractive because you don't even have to have a match for that one. But there's two. But there's two options, either the local government, the city can be the sponsor, or the Community Action Agency that serves our area. Clearly, uh, Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency is qualified and experienced. They've, uh, they have applied for these grants before. The concern, uh, that, uh, Community Action Agency has, if you look at the chart I handed you out, the, the second page, uh, and I think I understand this correctly, bear with me, because this is a new grant for me as well, so I, I've tried to do my homework. But the way the state does this, of course, the large towns, Oklahoma City and Tulsa, get their own money. But then, all the other communities are divided into regions. And our region is called the Northwest Community of Care. Uh, and that area gets an allotment of money. Uh, in FY twenty, there was two-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars allotted to the Northwest Continuum of Care. They divide themselves into five regions. Uh, we are in the East Central Region, uh, that includes Lincoln, Semino, Logan, and Potawatomi Counties. If you look at the allocation of dollars, what they do, the formula that they use, in each community or continuum of care, they make their own decision how to divvy up the money. And the way they've done it in the past, and, and the way they look like they're going to do it again this year, there's not been a final vote yet. Uh, but if there's one applicant, say, if you look down below the gray line in the central area, uh, Youth Family Services out of El Reno, they get a full share. Uh, the, historically, there's not been an applicant out of the West Central Region, Custer, Roger, Mills, and Washtot County. So they take the full amount of money they get, divide it by four, and that's how much money goes to each region. So if you only got one applicant in that region, like last year, you got sixty-one-thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars. If you got more than one applicant out of that region, then you divide a share. So your pie gets divided. And if you look above the gray line, East Central, A was Semino Family Resources, so they got half a share. And then Central Oklahoma, their application for Potawatomi and Semino, they got a half of a share to share it between those two entities. So now, when you add Hope House out of Guthrie, it stands alone if we are the sponsor. The concern with the Community Action Agency is if they're lumped in with them, the amount of money they get decreases. Uh, but under the current formula of, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, each region, because it's divided by four, because they don't anticipate. Now, that could change if all of a sudden somebody in, uh, the, uh, West Central decided to apply, but to our knowledge, it's not, sixty-four thousand, but Semino would get twenty-one thousand. Uh, Central Oklahoma would get twenty-one-thousand, five-hundred to split between Potawatomi County and Semino County, and Hope House would be eligible for twenty-one-thousand, five-hundred. Now, our application is more than that for Hope House, and the recommendation was to apply for more, because if one of these in our area does not qualify, then we would get more money. And so that's why you apply for more than the projected twenty-one-five. If you go back to the next sheet, just so we understand, at the bottom, if you are a sponsor, your obligation, uh, the sponsor is the signatory on the grant contract and the direct recipient of the money. So the money for the sponsor comes to the city. Uh, there will be a process where the sponsor receives documentation from Hope House on their invoices. The sponsor will review those to make sure everything's in order, they follow the correct purchasing procedures, administrative functions, and then they process and reimburse Hope House for those invoices. The sponsor is responsible for the oversight of the financial reporting, proof of match, and make sure all the federal requirements are followed. Uh, sponsor is, uh, is responsible for all aspects of the state and federal regulations. Once funded, then we will work with Department of Commerce, if we're the sponsor, and there will be a sponsor shelter agreement that is put together to cover all of this. The, because of the way the money's divided out and the concerns about, uh, further dividing the amount of money available to the Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency, they've expressed that they would prefer not to be the sponsor and the city be the sponsor, but they have volunteered, because they have experience with the grant. They will provide administrative assistance to the city to make sure that we have their assistance in processing the invoices from Hope House, make sure everything's in order, to reduce the burden on city staff and the time we have to put into it for the first year if we're the sponsor. Hopefully, I've summarized all that adequately.
I want you to come sit by me. It sounds like you're on my side.
Well, don't, 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 don't get, don't go that far.
So.
Yes.
Uh, any questions, Leroy? There's, uh, five people that are from Hope House Board or, uh, Community Action Agency, uh, that have asked to, to speak to. Uh, I, I do have a quick question. Um, so, uh, and this may be for one of the people coming back up, but, so, the, the, um, uh, Community Action Agency has, uh, agreed to provide training, uh, for our, for city staff. Not that they, not that they would administer it themselves.
They will, they will provide training to Hope House to make sure they understand the guidelines they're supposed to follow. And then they will assist us in administering it, so we can send the invoices and stuff and have them review them, sign off on them, so that we know the procedures have been followed. So it's more than just training for us. They will actually provide hands-on.
Administrative services.
Administrative services to review the invoices for us, to check off to make sure things were done according to the rules they were supposed to.
So our staff impact will be minimal?
It will be minimal. There will still be some, I'm not gonna say there won't be some staff, and you know me, I'm gonna make sure that things are teased or cross and eyes are dotted, but it will significantly reduce our workload if they provide that assistance.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, Leroy, before I ask? Okay. Um, Sue, I guess I'm gonna start with you.
I'm going to ask, uh, OJ, who's a founder.
Okay, OJ Myers.
OJ Myers is the founder and administrator.
Introduce yourself, your address, uh, and then you're going to, what, tell us about the Hope House, or what?
In a nutshell.
And you have five minutes.
Five. Wonderful. My name is OJ Myers. I live at twelve-twenty West Washington Avenue, here in beautiful Guthrie, America. So, uh, I, as Sue said, was one of the founding, um, members of Hope House Guthrie, uh, a name that I thought I was being really inventive and creative with and pulled out of my hat, because our incorporated name was Neighborhood Hope Dealers, and obviously, what we wanna offer, do offer, is hope. And I thought, well, let's call it Hope House Guthrie. I didn't wanna call it Neighborhood Hope Dealers Mission Place. So anyway, so that's how we came up with the name. And then, much to my dismay, as I began to research that, I found that there was a Hope House in every town in America, or Hope something, but in any case. So that's how we came up with the name. Let me just read this to you. It'll be more succinct. "In June of twenty-twenty, Hope House Guthrie was established when a group of Guthrie citizens determined to help their fellow man during a critical time in America. First, by feeding the homeless from a church kitchen, and then acquiring a seventeen-thousand-square-foot facility," that's Hope House Guthrie, "to provide much-needed services to our growing homeless population. During the height of COVID- nineteen, Hope House Guthrie handed out hundreds of food boxes to families weekly, about three to four hundred, the men and women of the house doing that work to help others. This first year, we have maintained services to those in need with donations from, uh, the community churches and the citizens of Guthrie." So far. The request, uh, now we are asking for your help by acting as our sponsor to obtain a forty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-six-dollar ESG, Emergency Services Solutions Grant, from the Department of Commerce. If the application is funded, parties would sign a sponsor shelter agreement. The request is inclusive but not limited to the city of Guthrie to prove, approve the ESG services to be provided by Neighborhood Hope Dealers in the community and local government certification of approval. Central Oklahoma Community Action Agency, COCA, has agreed to provide technical assistance at no expense to the city and to Hope House Guthrie, uh, to ensure that all aspects of the ESG grant are carried out according to state and federal regulations. And they have agreed to do that at no expense, uh, to either of us. So, um, we serve the most needful in our community. We feed the hungry, the homeless, the neglected. We advocate for each person that comes to our door. Hope House Guthrie is a seventeen, almost eighteen-thousand-square-foot building with three wings, uh, for men, women, and families, and housing offices. Thirty-seven large rooms with two single beds each, furniture, closets, a full bathroom is shared with the person in the next room, with exceptions for families that have private bathrooms. Towels, linens, toiletries, blankets are all provided by Hope House Guthrie. Also, clothing and toiletries is needed. A public shower is available for those walk-ins that choose not to stay but need a shower. They can have a shower, given a hot meal and a meal to take with them, a sleeping bag, blankets, whatever we have if they need. We also offer a closet for clean clothing, shoes, socks, so, and so forth. The house is a sober living facility. We hold daily morning devotion, and recovery meetings are held Monday and Thursday evenings. Most clients choose to go to church on Sundays of their choice, and the house provides transportation as needed. How's my time? I got two minutes?
You got, uh, you got a minute and a half left.
Minute and a half. Each client rises at seven AM. We eat breakfast at the same time after morning devotional, uh, if they care to participate. That's not mandatory. You cannot mandate, um, religious services. Uh, so, uh, then they go on to their chores on the grounds, unless they have a job to go to. Our life transformation program is a two-year program, used to help our clients to learn to live responsibly again, build a life they don't need to escape from. Our goal is to help them re-enter the community. Since June twenty-twenty, we've assisted over one-hundred-and-fifty homeless clients. I'm gonna skip, uh, Hope House Guthrie gives the homeless, uh, a loss, and the loss a place to shelter in, food and clothing, help replacing social security cards, state ID, help you file your back taxes, transportation to and from court, and medical appointments, assists with DHS benefits, health and SNAP, haircuts. We have volunteers, um, that come and do that for us, and some of the men cut, cut each other's hair. Transportation, we have trailer and equipment for local day jobs. Some of the men who don't have jobs, and women, uh, our director and some of our house leaders will take them out to do work in the community. We get calls almost daily, uh, sometimes more than one in a day, to come and, um, paint this, clean up that, fix the patio, porch, whatever might be. Our men have really become a, kind of a go-to, uh, uh, day services. Uh, and, and, and they get paid ten dollars an hour when they go and do that. We don't get, we don't keep any of that money. That money goes to the man, whatever it pays. So, real quickly, in the month of May, so far, today is the eighteenth, but through the fifteenth, how many people are living full-time at Hope House, starting with day one? Twenty-five, 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 twenty-eight, twenty-eight, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-six, 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 twenty-five, twenty-seven, twenty-six. How many people in the house today?
Uh, twenty-five, not including ourselves.
Twenty-five, not including you two. This is our director and his wife, our co-directors. They now live full-time on the property with their young son, and so they are there twenty-four-seven, seven days a week, except we do try to get them out of there a little bit, a day off here and there, or a few hours, in any case. Any questions for me?
Questions from the council?
I think it's fabulous. I, I think it's something that's long overdue. I'm, I'm glad to see you guys doing it.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, we're very honored to.
Did you mention continuing education by a computer?
Uh, we do. We, we now have a computer, um, classroom set up. We have six computer stations?
Yes, we have, actually, we have, we have eight altogether that can be used. We have two dedicated solely to communication.
Yeah.
Four dedicated to research, and two that are accessible to.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we have those computer stations, some equipment that was donated to us. And, uh, Ryan, our director, is quite, uh, knowledgeable in the technical IT field, so he was able to set all that up. We have printers, uh, so they can print whatever they need to. Uh, they can access GED classes. We have people enrolled in online courses now. Uh, we have men who came to the house with nothing and were afraid to leave the house nine months in, just not ready to go out there and get that job, and finally did, nine months, ten months in. And now, these, some of these men, almost everyone who has a job is giving back, whatever. We have a client who gives us three-hundred dollars a month now. That's his tithe. We have a client who gives a hundred. We have, uh, uh, men who, and women who buy most of the groceries in the house. We wind up spending, I don't know, seven or eight-hundred dollars out of our budget every month for groceries now, where it used to be every penny was, uh, out of my wife's pocket when we started.
All right.
So, it's really been, uh, uh, just an amazing, amazing ride so far.
Okay. Anybody else?
I first heard about Hope House through Generations Church.
Yes, sir.
Where I was attending at the time, and the pastor there is on your board, Josh Sebo.
Yes, sir, yes.
And he spoke to the church very highly, explained what was going on there, and, and decided to, and I guess still today, I spoke to him, so they're still paying for.
Yes, sir.
Your rent or your lease.
They pay our rent every month, as long as, uh, until further notice, so.
And then I came to visit you on February first and spoke with you in depth about it, made a contribution.
Very generous contribution, yes, sir.
And I would encourage citizens of Guthrie to get on board with that, that have discretionary funds for giving.
Thank you.
Or charitable. And I would encourage churches to get on board with it as well.
Amen. We have several churches now who, who are involved on a regular monthly basis, donating X amount of goods or funds. Uh, I could name them real quick if you wanted to hear, but there's six or seven of them.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Leroy?
If, if we could back up just a minute, I had the city attorney review it. We have two city councilmen that sit on the board of Hope House. City attorney determined it was not a conflict of interest for them to discuss and vote on this issue, but he did recommend it for transparency as part of this process, that we recognize that the two council members that are on that board just for transparency purposes.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman Case, myself.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Myers. Uh, Sue, who would you like to call next?
Well, since everything's going so well, so far. You can always trust Brian. He has hard questions.
And I'm not up to a hard one.
I'm not gonna ask any questions.
Okay, name, address.
Sue Ducharme. Uh, my address is three-thirteen South Second Street, and, um.
You have five minutes.
I'll talk, I can't talk as fast as OJ, but there are a couple of things that I would like to say. And, uh, this began with a vision that OJ, a couple of street people and some churches had. So, I know pretty much everyone that knows Hope House and this community seems to know it, will support us, and they need us. More than anything, they need us. And I heard, uh, you discussing the elbow. We still have people living down there in tents and cardboard boxes. So, before you start working there, and I know it'll be a while, because you're not funded yet, but you have a plan, we need to get those folks out of there and hopefully into Hope House and stabilize them, uh, like we have the others. Not everyone stays at Hope House. Some leave. They don't like rules. But many of them return saying, you know, I made a mistake in leaving. mistake in leaving. So we may have to go through that a few times. We want to encourage those out in the Elbow. I see them walk past my house every day. They have backpacks and torn clothes. So we feel like that we're doing a real service for this community, and I appreciate the community for approving of what we do. This isn't your vision of what a homeless shelter is. We've got a lot of guys standing outside smoking cigarettes and chatting. It's not like the old Jesus house. These guys are inside learning, working, and once we can get all of their ID and their their social security cards, then eventually they get to see their children again. We've got workforce development involved in this too. So we have some good men and women over there, and often we have families. So just to talk about the grant for one second, it's primarily for rehousing and preventing homelessness, but preventing homelessness is what it's all about. So that's also our job, is once we have them in there, or if there's people in the street, we want them in Hope House, but we also want them to be able to go out on their own, find them housing where they can live and re-enter this community as an upright citizen. So we take a little longer than most places. We're not going to just put clean clothes on them and give them a meal and send them back out. I want, I want you guys to know that, that we're not just your ordinary homeless shelter. And then I saw your workshop today, and I know that you like to hear figures spewed out. So I found this where apparently President Biden wants to take care of the homeless too, and in doing that, there's, I just wanted to cover just briefly the different types of homelessness that he wants to.
You have one minute.
I can do it. Healthcare for homeless, Runaway and Homeless Youth Act, projects for assistance in transitioning from homelessness, which is basically what we do, and then we just have homeless grants. Domestic violence is huge when it comes to homelessness. We also assist with that. Your police department, the sheriff department, brings people to us when someone's released from jail and have no place to go, or if there's a domestic violence situation, public help. So there is also a HUD and VA supporting housing program with vouchers. It'll take us a long time to be able to get involved in all of that, but I just wanted you to know that there will be money coming from all different directions, and we just want to be able to apply for that ourselves without asking for a sponsor. So I appreciate your time.
Questions of Mr. Charm? No? Okay, thank you. Right. Joe Chapel, did you want to add anything?
I just want to add a little bit. I've been on the board of Neighborhood Solutions for more years than I can remember, and one of the things I'm proudest of being from Guthrie is how people, I mean, time and time again, you see it other places, but you see it here, where people here try to help other people. It just seems to me, in the simplest form, it seems like if the city doesn't do this and the action committee does, that Hope House won't get as much money. And although Leroy certainly hasn't expressed an opinion one way or the other in which you guys are supposed to decide, I appreciate the fact that he showed a willingness to dot the T, you know, dot the I's and cross the T's. It's something that he is willing to do, and I heard this today, and I wanted to confirm it, if the city does choose to proceed and sponsor, does, is it true that the city gets 3.2% of the grant, or was I?
3.75%.
3.75%.
We would be eligible for it, but our recommendation would be to give that back to Hope House.
Well, and that's, that's a wonderful thing, but anyway, I'm just here to encourage you to, to, to keep this money in, in our community if there's any way possible, and thank you for your time and service, and thanks to the volunteers that serve our community.
Any questions to Mr. Chapel before he leaves?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Welsh?
I guess, I'm Ryan Walsh. I live at 1916 East Perkins Avenue, Perkins Avenue at the Hope House. My wife and I are the director and co-director up there. We were asked to move on premises so we could start a women's program there. So I don't even know if I'll take five minutes, but I want to tell you a little, little bit of what I see every day. I've had the unfortunate life of going through multiple rehabs and seeing a lot of, I don't know how you would put that, but structure that didn't quite hold the house up. Whenever I got to Hope House, I was actually sober for a very long time, and I just had a little blip, but I came in and I felt an atmosphere that was, that was productive and conducive to somebody's growth and new, and into, into community again. It's been a real honor to be in that house and see, see the men and women that are there now growing to strive to be a part of the community again. To be a part of that, I can't even tell you what that means to me. Even the temporary housing that comes through there, because we offer temporary housing, emergency residence, the program, they even, they, they get involved in the program too just because they see the attitude and the, the way these people's lives are changed, the way their, their lives are lighting up, their, their eyes are just glimmering with You know, it's, it's a fitting name for that place. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions, Ryan? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Loudermilk?
Thank you, council, very much for letting me head up.
Name, address.
Oh, okay, this is going to be interesting. I'm Barbara Loudermilk, and I reside in Norman, but two years ago, I bought our retirement home in Lake Home, and it's located in Jeff's Ward at 6205 Lakeside Drive, and I could go out tonight when we leave here, and I'll sit and watch the east side of Lake Guthrie. It's wonderful. So, so I've gotten to know my neighbor, and I'm, I'm getting to know my councilman, and four years ago, I retired after 35 years of running one of the best Oklahoma career techs in the state of Oklahoma, Metro Tech and downtown Oklahoma City. I hold my superintendency and principalship, and so I went home, and my husband wouldn't let me redesign his barn. So, so he is a mounted police officer, retired Oklahoma City officer, and he's working at Francis Tuttle, teaching kids to be policemen. He's real disturbed right now because families are discouraging that for some of their young people. That's another topic. I'm here tonight as the executive director, running a six-county nonprofit. It's been in operation since 1968. It has, it covers five counties, which includes Cleveland. I reside there, and I, I, I'm a smart aleck, I'll say, I reside in two counties of my district. It's Logan County, Payne County, Seminole, Lincoln, Potawatomi. Did I list all six? Payne, Potawatomi, Lincoln, Logan, and Seminole. I have the privilege of working with many city councils as small as, God bless them, Pink Oklahoma, as big as Stillwater and Norman, and so I have spoke to your council in the past three years that I've held this position. We normally have a budget of approximately 1.2 million annually, but since COVID in March of 2020, city manager, we are now up to almost $3 million, because not only are we deploying CARES Act money that has been given to me by the Department of Commerce, plus my operating budget, I've now been asked to deploy monies from many, many cities. We've completely deployed all of the City of Moore's CARES Act money. We are deploying 187,000 from Shawnee. There is going to be another wave of rural money coming out in the end of June, and it'll go through COGS, there'll be emails going out, and my little staff of 26, 11 of them which are COTS drivers, that means they drive transit cars like, the other 15 are operational staff. So we will be deploying almost 3 million. We, we are very, very busy, and then we've been blessed with HUD giving us an $8.5 million HUD grant to build 35 low-m净 houses. I am looking for counties that will deploy more land so we can continue to build. HUD is going to do that. So the partnership, and I call it a partnership through the MOU with the City of Guthrie and Hope Center and COCA is vital because I am creating many, many MOUs where we're trying to stretch our operational manpower to help all these cities, and you are very important, but so is WeWoca, and so is other cities. So us giving the training is crucial. We want to help you there because we do have experience, but my poor little accounting staff is swamped, that you can't imagine. So we want this to continue because we believe that there'll be other partnerships very soon and other grants that we want to work with the city. That is the intent of Community Actions. We were created by President Johnson to work hand-in-hand with city municipalities through two different funds sources, community service block grants and community development block grants, and I know both, I know you get CDBG, and so we, we want to be here for you. We think this is the first step in many, many numerous future MOUs that we could have with the City of Guthrie, so.
Questions from the council?
I have, so how much work is involved in it? You mentioned that it, you know, you're swamped. I assume that's why you don't, one of the reasons you don't want to sponsor this.
Well, you've got to understand, ESG is just one funding source. I also have CARES Act money, and I have other kinds of money for mortgage assistance, prescription assistance, so we do all that, and it vacillates from county. In this county, we can do prescription assistance, utility and rent assistance. I now have CARES Act money for another 10 months to be able to help people that live in Logan County with their mortgages, their rent, and their utilities, and I just got permission from Commerce to up that to four or five months. Originally, they said we could only do it for two months. Well, now we've got families that are six months arrears with their mortgage, and they could potentially be homeless. So now Commerce is upping it, and I hope, is this televised? I hope the citizens are hearing this. We'll be able to up and help some of these families from losing their homes, and that's crucial for some of our families that are, been impacted big with COVID. So lots of things happening. 2020 is the most unique year that Community Actions had. We've never gone through a pandemic in 63 years.
I think the real question, though, is how much work is this that we're asking our staff who is swamped to take on?
Well, once all the paperwork, Sue and, and Hope Dealer will have a bunch of paperwork proving proof of income, family size, all that, and whether they're unemployed or whether they're getting any kind of income, any kind, once we've established that they qualify and they do that, and that's, that's the kind of case management that we'll train them, then we'll create a PO, and they'll just write a check with that PO. But my staff is going to go through and make sure every dot is, I is dotted and everything is completely done so that it's accurate, because, trust me, after 53 years, we know what Commerce does when they come in and do an audit.
So the Hope House staff will fill out the document, if you will.
We will go back there and check it.
We'll check it, and then send the PO to.
That's it. That's it. And then Leroy is working on a system called OK Grants, and we, we've been working with that for several years. We will assist staff in coming over here and making sure they understand that. And we also have lots of close relationships with people from Commerce. We'll probably hogtie one of them and bring them to, bring, bring them to help us with that too.
What is that, the OK Grant?
It's a software program where the money flows to municipalities and to, to community action. It's just, it's, it's where the money actually gets placed in there for reimbursement, and he, he, he will send the POs once it's been reimbursed.
All our grants go through that.
Yes. So you do have some, you've got someone a little bit trained in that.
The grant part of, yes.
Yes.
Not this particular grant, but we do grants all the time.
Yeah, so I'm going to, I don't have any que, I might have another question, but I've got a question for Leroy. What is your opinion of this?
Well.
I mean, I know you haven't, Joe mentioned, you haven't mentioned it one word or the other, but.
Clearly, there are reasons that the city would not want to be the sponsor because we are taking on the liability of a grant with a new agency that we're not totally familiar with. It is a little bit of a new lane for us. It's a grant we've not done, but it is a similar grant to CDBG, which we are pretty familiar with those regulations. So I give you a long list of reasons. The amount of time that we spend will depend on the quality of the administrators at Hope House. If they do a good job, then our commitment of time will be reduced.
And then we're going to go behind, and my case manager's from Shawnee will drive over and work with Hope Center to make sure everything's correct.
But if you take all the reasons I could give you of why we shouldn't do it, I think if you look at the amount of risk that we have on a $20,000 to $40,000 grant is limited, even if there is a mistake, we'll have an opportunity to correct it normally. I cannot see a reason why we would not want to be the sponsor once you weigh out the different elements and discuss it.
Do you think, Barbara, that the city being a sponsor puts the Hope House future application, there's going to be more money coming down, down the pike, as you've said, and as the president has identified, do you see that that in any way makes the Hope House more, a more vital applicant with the city as the endorser or the city as the, as the sponsor?
Versus you, versus your.
The answer is yes, and let me tell you why. I have the privilege of floating, my technical term, I say I flit around, and I've told you that too.
Yeah.
I've flit around to all the municipalities, and I've seen the City of Norman work with nonprofits to get a small housing produced. I see Stillwater doing that. So when the government is in their work, saying this has got to improve our cities, we're seeing a change. Mayor Ed Bolt at Shawnee is working very hard, Page at WeWoca, all the mayors are starting to look at homeless programs and the commitment they're doing. City of Norman has hired a homeless coordinator that's under their payroll. The City of Shawnee just hired a homeless coordinator. I'm not saying that Guthrie's going to get there. I hope it doesn't because John and I want to retire here. This is where we want to live, and we want this to be a city that doesn't have some of the big city problems. And so I think it's very proactive that we start looking at ways to work together, and, and there are gaps in this city. We don't have the nonprofits that some of the other cities have, and we need to have some creation of that. I have numerous programs that I can develop here, but it's not going to meet all the gaps, and so we, we've got to work on that. Just with the, the Elbow situation, you've already got a homeless situation there that has to be looked at prior to even doing your work that you've been proposing tonight.
So how many municipalities that you know of sponsor?
Homeless programs?
This, well, no, sponsor this type of grant?
Well, I know that Norman has done it, Shawnee has done it with Salvation Army. Many of the city council of Shawnee are on the Salvation Army board, just like you two are on, so there's connectivity with certain agencies, and I, I currently, I have Gary Mice, your, your House of Representative in your district, sitting on my board. So it's not just city councilmen, it may be county commissioners. We're, we're, we know to strengthen the county community action and to start getting the money from the government, we have to have the politicians on our boards, and we work hand-in-hand to make things happen. So be careful, I may ask you to sit on my board.
Well, see, that's part of what I'm concerned about, because we've turned, in the six years I've been here, we've turned a lot away, okay, of, of having city involvement.
Well, let me tell you.
And enough that it makes you feel bad, but let me finish. I support, and when I was talking to Jim, I support the Hope House unequivocally, okay, no question. I don't know that, you know, my, originally, I thought we were going to do a, you know, the certification of local government approval type thing, saying, yes, we want this in our community, this is something that needs to be in our community. I'm 100% for that, and that's what we should do. I think that it should be announced multiple times on these televised events here, okay? But we've turned some pretty serious organizations away on financing of, of doing any type of involvement like this, and so that's where, that's my only concern, is that how do you, how do you say no to you, and you, and you, and say yes to you?
Well, let me tell you, if you look at the creation, and I, I can send you. Well, let me tell you, if you look at the creation, and I can send you emails on that. We were created, we are a hybrid nonprofit. Every county in the United States has a community action that was created by Congress and President Johnson. And, and what we are made to do is to funnel the federal money and the state allocation and private grants and private donations all together. So, I jokingly say I'm, I am a, I'm a nonprofit, but I'm almost 95 or more percent funded by federal and state funding. So, I'm a hybrid nonprofit. And the intent was that city government, city municipalities, work hand-in-hand.
Yeah, but I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about, we've had multiple other organizations that live here and work here, come right before us and want us to have some type of involvement, and we didn't.
And I'm just thinking that your organization has a reputation of doing it since 1968. This organization hasn't even been in existence a year.
Right.
So, they don't have a reputation.
No, and that's why we're going to be behind them, supporting them as much as we can.
So, if we were to politely decline, would your organization step up and help?
It would be difficult for us, because I only have 15 employees, including myself, 14 others and I, working six counties. And it, we will, I'm going to pull my grants manager to do the work for Leroy and for Sue. And we're going to have to pull her out from writing some grants. So, I may not be able to apply for as many grants right now while we pull her out of here and have her work with Sue and OJ. But we want some more, we do not have enough nonprofits in this town, and we want to support that. So, that's one of the reasons we're doing it.
Any other questions of Ms. Loudermilk? I'll entertain a motion then to approve the grant application as identified in item number 15A and B.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Against, right, raise your right hand. The motion fails. Four to three.
Could, could we back up and separate out 15A?
Well, that's what I was trying to do.
Because if now the Community Action Agency decides to have a special meeting and become the sponsor, they will still need 15A from us in order to do that. So, could we at least split that out and vote on 15A separately?
Take a motion to approve the grant application as identified on item 15, only item A.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed?
You don't want to?
I think it was a, I won't comment. Yeah, motion to approve item 15A passed six to one. Item number 16, consider approval to convene into executive session pursuant to reviewing some economic development potential at our industrial park. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We will adjourn.